City County Planning Commission, please come to order. Ms. Martin, would you please call the roll for us?
Yes ma'am. Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham? Commissioner Volkert?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay? Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Houston? Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, you all have the summary minutes of the August fifteenth meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? No corrections, I'd ask for a motion.
We'll move.
Thank you, in a second please.
Second.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Stay.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Stay.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner, please order that the record include all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I'd request that you administer those to those witnesses.
So ordered, and do you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
I swear.
Thank you all. You have the subdivision and site development plans, the preliminary approvals in your packet. Any questions on those? No questions, we'll move down to the letters of credit and performance bond. The original agenda had three items. If you'll look at your seat, you should have an amended agenda tonight with three extra items, bringing that to six items. Any questions on those six items? No questions, I'd ask for a motion please.
We'll move.
Thank you, in a second. Thank you.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. We don't have any unfinished business, and that brings us up to enter into the public hearing.
Ms. Runner, we have had a request on item number five for you all to consider a recess, so I think we have several people here for that, so it might be appropriate to go ahead and call that one and ask their legal counsel to ask, and see if that is still the case.
Thank you sir. We will jump to item five on the public hearing items. That would be docket number twenty nineteen thirty-seven ZBG. Mayor Sid Alec and Tim Wheeler have filed an application to rezone a portion of tracts of land containing approximately seventy-three point zero-six acres located at sixty-three zero-nine Russellville Road from agriculture and general business to highway business, our M four multifamily residential and light industrial with the general development plan. And we have their attorney present, Mr. Davenport.
Good evening, Chair Runner. Chris Davenport, on behalf of the applicants. Mr. Peterson is correct, I am requesting a recess on this application. I have learned somewhat through the grapevine that there was some interest in this application. There had been a request made for an opportunity, hopefully for my client and myself, to discuss with those individuals. I can only assume that a good number of the people here tonight do have interest and/or some opposition to this application, so I would encourage, if we do recess this two weeks, those individuals to please meet me outside, and I will give them my contact information with the hopes that there can be some meaningful discussions in the meantime. And that would be our request, Chair Runner.
Thank you. And questions, commissioners?
Y'all had a neighborhood meeting yet, Chris?
We did not. Commissioner Warren, of course, that's not required anymore. I haven't done one of those for a couple of years, but this frankly, given the feedback that I've heard, is sometimes I don't really think those are warranted, but this is a case where I think it may be helpful, frankly. So, I'm not sure we'll have a formal meeting, but my hope is that these folks will get my information, and we can have that dialogue and see, at least maybe find some middle ground on, again, not knowing entirely what their opposition is, but we want to have that opportunity.
That'll be tonight, in the lobby?
It would be the start of it. I'm not sure how meaningful our discussions will be tonight, but we can start that dialogue.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So you're asking for continuance, to continue it for two weeks?
Yes ma'am, two weeks for that to take place.
Give us that date, do you have that date that we can announce?
The nineteenth, twenty nineteen, at six P.M. in this room.
September the nineteenth, six P.M. in this room. Any other questions before I ask for a motion? No other questions, then I'd ask for a motion please.
I'd make a motion that we, at the applicant's request, continue this hearing for two weeks, and adjourn back here in two weeks to, once again, bring this before the commission.
Thank you ma'am, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld? Commissioner Volkert? Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you, the motion carried, and if you did not hear Mr. Davenport, anyone that has an interest in this application that outside in the hallway, he can give you contact information, and so you all can go ahead, and we'll wait a second for the room to clear.
Just one clarification, this will not be re-advertized. We may change the sign date, but we will not re-advertize it or probably send out letters, because it's set for two weeks from today here, so.
You will send out letters?
We will not, probably.
September the sixteenth, I mean, the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
September the nineteenth, at six P.M.
Weeks from today.
We'll give them just a few minutes to clear.
It's already passed. Might be done early though. I technically couldn't even mail out letters, but it won't be there until like, two days before the meeting.
They were all here. Kate Shine, Nick and... I was primed to read. He ready to run one. I ain't gonna take 'em out, I have to get out of here. That little man, it won't hold many. It's just, we're just, we're just... Yeah, we're just fighting the inevitable battle here. It's gonna happen, they're gonna be back next time. If there is a next time, they might as well make a decision. There isn't enough heat put on them, they might decide...
Pack it in.
Yeah.
I doubt it.
Oh, they'll try it. There's a lot of, the way I read that thing over there, there's a lot of ifs in there. And don't knows.
We could probably go ahead now?
Oh boy, yeah, ain't he?
Okay, I think we've got it now, and we can go ahead and continue. We'll go back to item one, under the public hearings. Docket number twenty nineteen zero-eight DP. Jackson White has filed an application to amend the general development plan, which are the development plan conditions on a tract of land containing approximately five-point-six-six acres located at fifty-eight fifty-one Scottsville Road. Property is owned highway business with a general development plan. And we will have the staff report from Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on July the tenth for the property you mentioned here at fifty-eight fifty-one Scottsville Road, outlined in yellow on the screen. And as you mentioned, the applicants are requesting to amend the general development plan, which would include the development plan conditions for this property. The current zoning of the property is highway business, and it was rezoned to highway business in two thousand twelve. The current use of the property is commercial, and you can see that there are mixture of uses in the area, ranging from single-family to multifamily, agriculture, public institutional, industrial. So, there are several types of uses out this way along Scottsville Road. And then, for the future land use map, we have two designations. The first is commercial, which is the overwhelming majority of the property, and it's hard to see on the screen, but there's a little tiny, little sliver of mixed-use residential in that corner there. I think the yellow line covers it up, so I'm not going to read through the description for the mixed-use residential category, but I will go through the commercial description for your reference. This future land use designation consists of a broad array of commercial development, including individual commercial businesses that may exist along a highway corridor or a business district, as well as larger planned shopping centers and office parks. Limited high-density multifamily uses are allowed to be mixed into commercial areas, and these uses should be limited to upper stories or blended in or scattered among commercial uses. No more than twenty-five percent of any contiguous area designated commercial should contain multifamily uses. Compatibility should be addressed by applying the policies in L U one-one-three in conjunction with the general development plan. So with that, I'm going to jump to the conceptual layout, or the general development plan that was submitted by the applicants, and I'm going to move on to the site characteristics review. This is the proposed layout that is shown here on the screen. There's a commercial building proposed up front here, and I'll get to a few items in just a second that kind of describe how the property would develop if you approve this application. And then there are also five more commercial buildings that are planned toward the rear portion of the property. Under natural features, we've noted, I'll go back to the aerial, so you can see what I'm referencing, that there are several mature trees and other vegetative buffering located around the perimeter of the property, along the northern and western property lines. Next, on page three, just touching on the surrounding architectural features, staff has noted that the area contains a mixture of residential and commercial properties of varying ages, mainly ranging from one to two stories in height. Under building orientation, the applicant has agreed, and I will jump back to the preliminary development plan here, that the buildings within one hundred fifty feet of Scottsville Road on this plan, that would be this main building up here, up front, would be designed in such a way to appear to face Scottsville Road regardless of the driveway access and parking. Under landscaping and screening, the applicants have agreed that the landscaping will follow the standards in the zoning ordinance, as well as buffering the adjacent residential uses by a ten-foot wide vegetative buffer, retaining the existing mature, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, mature tree canopy, insofar as practicable as stated in the development plan conditions. Moving on to the area-specific policy review, this property is located within the boundary of the Scottsville Road corridor study that was adopted by the planning commission in two thousand fifteen. The proposal complies with the majority of the recommendations from this study, but there were three items that we felt the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. So I will touch on those. There are three, starting on page four, under building materials. So, the recommendation states a building material requirement for both residential and non-residential development for facades facing Scottsville Road. The applicant committed in development plan condition number ten, that the building facades of all buildings within one hundred fifty feet of Scottsville Road shall be constructed of seventy percent brick, ephes, stone, or modern masonry, or cementitious material, split-face block, or other decorative block. Buildings more than one hundred fifty feet from Scottsville Road, so that would be, in general, basically from here back, so those five commercial buildings to the rear, will be constructed of architectural metal with a minimum of twenty percent brick, ephes, stone, modern masonry, or cementitious material, split-face block, or other decorative block, with one evergreen per fifteen feet of side-facing facade, side façade facing Scottsville Road. So that would be the facades up here that are facing Scottsville Road. Architectural metal buildings will incorporate concealed fasteners on the sides facing Scottsville Road, so again, that'd be the sides that are facing Scottsville Road, so on this side. And plain-faced blocks shall not be used as a visible exterior finished material in any building. So the planning commission should determine if the proposal complies with this recommendation relating to building materials. Next, relating to signage, a requirement that all new signage be monument style with a lower square footage cap, as well as prohibiting LED signs. The applicant's committed in development plan condition number three, that signage shall be monument style and shall not exceed fifteen feet in height, or a hundred and fifty square feet in sign-face area. No additional LED signs will be installed. And just for reference, the zoning ordinance permits freestanding signage in the highway business zone up to one hundred and fifty square feet. Next, under the parking requirements, a requirement that either no parking be allowed in the building setback along Scottsville Road, or to have parking to the rear of the building as long as the rear is not Scottsville Road. The applicant stated in development plan condition number seven, that no parking will be allowed within twenty-five feet, within the twenty-five-foot setback fronting Scottsville Road. And you'll see here that the preliminary development plan does depict some parking to be located in front of the proposed building, so the planning commission should determine compliance with this recommendation. With that, I'll move on to the proposed changes in the development plan conditions on page five. I've already touched on some of these items, so I won't repeat the ones that I've already mentioned. But just starting out with number one and two, these are more housekeeping items, these are required regardless of whether or not they're in the development plan conditions. So just to shorten things up, the applicants are proposing to delete those, but those are still requirements that they would have to adhere to. Number one relates to underground utilities. All utilities, including infrastructure within the right-of-way, will be located underground. That's a new condition that they're proposing with this application. Number two, access to the property. The property will have one access point to Scottsville Road, the location of which will be approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and there will be no access to adjacent residential uses. I already touched on signage. Moving down to number four, roof level screening. Roof level HVAC, electrical transformers, and similar facilities shall be screened from public view. Number five, there was a reference to landscaping, just following the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, but that's already required, so they're now proposing just to include text relating to the buffering that I mentioned earlier. There are no changes proposed to green space or setbacks for parking along Scottsville Road. And then, number eight, there's a proposal to remove the hours of operation restriction, and then the applicant has also included a building height requirement stating that no building on the property shall be constructed to exceed two stories in height. And then, there are some changes in number nine to the prohibited uses. Some of the uses, well actually, the ones that are crossed out, mulch manufacturing, transfer station, landfill, adult entertainment, manufactured home sales, those are not permitted in highway business. So, even though it looks like they're removing those, it's not to say that those will be allowed. But then they did add billboard as a prohibited use, outside storage within one hundred feet of Scottsville Road. And then they also added bingo parlor or any establishment conducting games of chance other than charitable gaming, provided that this restriction shall not prohibit the sale of lottery tickets incidental to a business, tattoo parlor, and any establishment selling or exhibiting pornographic materials. Next, on page six, I already touched on the building materials, but they have added a requirement in number eleven, that the property will be developed with a community mailbox system. Next, on page six, we have our zoning ordinance reference three twelve eight, which outlines the requirements to amend a development plan. And it states that an amendment to any development plan, for an, sorry, an amendment to any development plan condition for an approved development plan shall be approved only if the proposed amendment remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, and upon a finding that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area of the property in question, which were not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the general development plan that is being amended, or that there have developed physical conditions which would not permit development of property in question in accordance with the general development plan or development plan that is being amended. And on page seven, the applicants did submit a narrative to help address these requirements. The first paragraph there is more so a summary of the changes I just highlighted in the development plan conditions, so I'm going to jump down to the second half. And the applicants have stated that since the adoption of the original binding elements, there have been major changes of an economic, physical, and/or social nature within the area of this property, which were not anticipated at the time the original binding elements were adopted. First, the landscape operation which existed on the property failed several years ago. Next, since the property was rezoned to highway business, the B C T A Properties LLC, joining the subject property on its southern boundary, has begun a dense multifamily development on two-point-nine acres of thirty units in addition to a commercial building which fronts Scottsville Road. Next, the planning commission staff has completed the Scottsville Road corridor study guidelines for development in this area. In the restated development plan conditions, the applicant has complied with the recommendations outlined in the Scottsville Road corridor study. And then, last, development of mixed commercial uses per the restated development plan conditions will be in compliance with the future land use map. So, moving on to the focus twenty thirty category review on page eight, staff evaluated eighteen items. The planning commission should determine compliance with eight of these items. First, L U one-one-three, which looks at compatibility. The planning commission should determine if the proposed changes to the development plan are compatible with the area. Next, L U two and L U two-point-one, which look at quality of development. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Next, L U two-five-two and H N one-point-two, which deal with infill development. The planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, H N one and H N one-point-three, which look at character of the area. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development is a compatible infill project that will preserve and enhance the character of the area. And last, E D one, which looks at economic development, and the planning commission should determine if the proposed development will help to diversify the local economy. And last, I'm going to jump back to page one with the points to consider. Staff has noted that the proposed amendment remains consistent with the commercial future land use map designation. And then, we have also noted that the proposed development complies with the applicable criteria addressed in the site characteristics review, and complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design. Compatibility of the proposed changes to the development plan should be determined by the planning commission. And I believe that is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicants are here as well.
Do we, is this storage units?
No, it's not in storage units.
Okay.
Well, do we have any, what it's gonna be?
There is no restriction.
No, I understand.
In the prohibited uses that would prohibit that, but the plan that's shown before you does not incorporate storage units.
Are they just gonna be freestanding buildings, strip centers?
Maybe a better question for the applicants. I'm not sure of the details of the buildings toward the rear.
Number seven, this is the applicant stated on page number four.
Page four.
The applicant stated that no parking be allowed in twenty-five-feet setback fronting Scottsville Road. Preliminary document plan depicts that a portion of the parking for the building close to Scottsville Road be located in front of the building. Proposal requires this recommendation, so there's no parking in the front of Scottsville Road?
So, the recommendation, there's two parts to the recommendation from the study. One is that no parking be located within the building setback, which would be within twenty-five feet of the front property line along Scottsville Road. And then there's another portion of the recommendation that suggests that parking be located to either the rear or side of the building, so that would be basically saying, here's the front facade, and that the parking should be located to the side or rear. So they comply with a portion of the recommendation because they've prohibited parking within the building setback, but there are plans to have some of the parking in front of the
That's in compliance?
It's in compliance with a portion of the recommendation. And it is just a recommendation, so there are several recommendations, and so it's just kind of up to you all to determine what's important and weigh your decision accordingly. Mm-hmm.
Other questions before we hear from the applicant? Commissioners? Nothing else?
Evening commissioners, I'm Linda Thomas. I'm a little short, but I represent the owner of this five-point-six-seven-plus acres, Jack White. And he has, he is here tonight, his project manager, Chris Gerhart, is here, and Aaron Arnold, his surveyor, is here tonight. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I'd like to call Jack White, if I may, please.
You would state your name and address, please.
Jack White, make eighty-five, Baron River Road.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. White, are you the sole owner of this five-point-six-seven acres?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you are asking to restate your development plan conditions? And you rezoned this property to highway business back in two thousand and twelve, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Since two thousand and twelve, have there been some changes out there on that property?
I think the whole neighborhood has changed out there, and, you know, due to the age of our building and everything, and the way it looked, we felt at this point in time for what we want to do future-wise, it was best to take the building down and just start up with new instead of that particular structure. So, we have proposed this application, and we've kind of got a little picture here of a building we were considering for that front. We want it to, it's gonna comply pretty good with up the road where the Peachtree Center is.
Mr. White, is this a photograph of the Carpenter Dent Building in Scottsville County?
It is.
Is this what you're planning to have your front building look like, or the front of your building?
Not perfectly like that, because that's somebody else's building, but this is the style that we're gonna stay with for that front building.
You all see this? And it does, whoops, it does depict a little parking right here in front, but that is beyond the twenty-five-foot setback from Scottsville Road.
Oh yes. To put all the parking in the back of a building like that would be, I mean, it can be done, but it would be tough. I mean, most people want to come up to the front of the building to come in. You know, we could discuss turning the building, you know, a longer direction to put the parking in between is a possibility. But this is a style, we want the brick, the mortar, the stone, you know, we're gonna put up a nice building. We're trying to move some retail out that way. We've had a lot of requests while we're doing the project from folks. We had one group there, Fuel Nutritions, was interested. We've had a lot of the neighbors hoping we can draw that type of client on out there in some service-type industry.
White, well, the other buildings that you're talking about building on the property, will they look somewhere similar to that building?
They won't quite have this front, they'll be more of, of course, they won't be facing Scottsville Road whatsoever, and they'll be, I think, probably a hundred and... Hundred, hundred and fifty feet back, Aaron, help me with that. But they will be more of a stone, I must say, like, could be a concrete block-type thing, not a flat, you know, a face, you know, decorative. And then, we'll have, they'll have windows and nice doors in them.
You're planning on building other buildings for other retail?
Yes.
Okay.
That will be behind the building.
Sure.
The sides of the buildings that face Scottsville Road, Mr. White, what are they gonna look like?
They're gonna consist, basically, you know, you'd have the brick and the mortar like the planning commission has asked of these folks here, and, you know, they will look nice. They'll be nice.
Oh, is this be made an exhibit before the...
So let me ask you one other question. The back of the buildings, if I'm looking at your site, the back of the buildings on the left side that will back up to the residential that's being, or multifamily that's being built there, what will the back of the buildings look like?
They're probably gonna have some block and some metal on the backside. The residential that come in there, I feel that surely we've helped it some because we've, you know, we're taking that property level way down where it's, don't seem to be like a ditch anymore through there, so we're dropping our property level over there along them houses almost ten feet.
And there's also a ten-foot vegetative buffer between you, your property, and the residential uses, is that correct, Mr. White?
And that's correct, and I think in Mr. Heimer's plan also, there's supposedly, he is gonna erect a fence along that property line.
What about, where will your dumpster sit for the, on this piece of land?
They will be, Aaron, can you help me with that? I mean, they're not, definitely gonna be up front.
We need to swear you in, yes. If you state your name and address.
Aaron Arnold, East Scottsdale Drive, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
And you swear to tell the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So if you look on your monitors, we've got several locations. The mouse is hovering over one proposed dumpster location, and then we have another one over here to the side that's gonna be hidden by the landscaping that is... one over here to the side that's gonna be hidden by the landscaping that is required along that...
Will it be fenced? Will it be fenced?
Uh, by...
No, I mean, will there be a fence around?
There's a requirement in the ordinance that it has to either be fenced with a certain height to screen the dumpster, or with an opaque planting all the way around on three sides, with the exception of the front if you have doors, so you can still access the dumpster.
And then, there's a third one that'll be in the middle, so we'll have... Right now, we're on the central plane. We have three proposed dumpster locations.
So, you're anticipating putting little small businesses in there, or do you have a large business that you're gonna put in one building, or what exactly are you anticipating?
The back buildings, of course, the front buildings are gonna be about between nineteen-hundred to twenty-two-hundred square foot. If we have a customer that can use more than one, they can rent more than one. The larger buildings are about the same size. Buildings in the back are gonna be set up the same way. If you would like to rent the complete building, you have that option, or you can rent at least. I think them buildings are gonna be right around twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet sections, but the sections won't be put up until the customer has give us a plan of what they want there.
You have an... Do you have restaurants anticipated, or... I know I've seen your parking, but I'm not sure why that parking is...
We have had some interest. Nobody has, you know, wrote us a check or anything yet, but we've had some inquiries since we've started processing the land of what we're gonna do out there, and, you know, a restaurant-type thing would definitely fit in there, and I think would do real well out there.
I think so, too, but if you're gonna put, like, restaurants and nice businesses, then, you know, block face is not very appealing.
Well...
Especially to the residential around there.
Right, but the building we're gonna look at doing that with is not gonna be block faced. That's gonna move on back into the second section, and, I mean, we're open to, you know, if it can't be blocked, we can make it... I'm not talking about... You know, when you talk about block, there's a lot of nice block buildings around on Scottsville Road. I think there's a car dealership there, used cars, you know, that I think used to be the yard park. You know, they have a facial block-type thing, and it's painted really nice. I think it looks okay. I think if you're gonna be looking more to a restaurant-type acumen, they're gonna want to come to the front building. Does that help you?
It does, but I, you know, I just would like to see more ornate and nice buildings out there. I mean, if you're gonna change all these, your general plans, then I would like to see less metal and less block and more brick and stone and nice, nice buildings.
You're incorporating that into it, absolutely.
Would you be willing... Would you be willing to commit to more brick?
A bigger percentage of brick, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
Could it be brick or stone?
Sure. I think...
Twenty percent.
We've got twenty percent now. What are you thinking?
Sixty or seventy percent.
At least sixty to seventy.
Yeah.
I think we'd be okay at fifty. I mean, we'd just have to go back and look at the design of the buildings.
And the cost.
Of course, the cost is gonna escalate quite a bit, and... But we want them to look good, you know? We want to build a building that people are gonna be desirable and be proud of it. It's in their neighborhood. I think it will... I think our buildings... The front building, definitely, the back buildings, we can incorporate some more brick or stone or something like that into them if we can...
That you're willing to amend your...
DPC number ten.
Your general... Your development plan condition, number ten, to, in the second paragraph, increase the twenty percent to fifty percent, and that would be fifty percent brick, ephes, stone, modern masonry, or cementitious material.
Yes, sir.
May I ask one question? Hamp.
Of course.
I guess, so the way that condition reads, that would also include split-face block and decorative block in that fifty percent, the way it's worded. Is that correct?
I think he intended to exclude that, but that...
Yeah, I think we're asking for stony brick.
The fifty percent.
Delete the split-face block or the decorative block, and you're gonna leave the evergreen requirement?
Split-face block or other decorative block, or just the split-face?
I think we're looking for it and stuff.
So, you'd... It's the proposal that they ask you to approve to delete split-face block or other decorative block. Is that agreeable?
Yes, sir.
Then we'll leave in the requirement that one evergreen per fifteen feet of facade facing Scottsville Road will remain.
Yes, sir.
The other concern I have is you're taking out the hours of operation, so you're saying you could have something open twenty-four hours a day? That would be a concern for any residential around there, for sure.
The reason we is asking for that is if we did get some restaurant-type business, it might be open, you know, later at night. I think we had a seven o'clock in there or five o'clock before. I can't remember, but...
Seven AM to eight PM.
Yeah. Yeah, I could, you know, I could see someone coming in and having longer operating hours than that. I mean, you know, they could, you know, a restaurant or something could come in there, and, you know, they'd want to start serving breakfast at six o'clock and maybe be open until ten, twelve o'clock at night. I mean, you know, we gotta have something to draw there, and I know we do have some residential area coming in around us, but...
Okay, go on.
Is that enough time? If it's a bar?
Could we do, like, six AM to one?
AM.
I'd like to see it cut off at midnight, honestly.
The only reason...
Have any residential...
The only reason I might agree with him on the one is if it was a Domino's Pizza or something on an end cap. I mean, you know, they're probably there to one o'clock.
Exactly.
I don't want to limit your businesses, so...
I think...
But I do agree. I don't think we want something at three o'clock in the morning coming in and out that next to that residential.
One AM, then?
Mr. White, the proposal is to amend Development Plan Condition number eight to limit the hours between six AM and one AM each day.
What we will do is add a new DPC number twelve, since number eight addresses building height.
Good suggestion.
We can do that.
I like your project.
I think it will be...
I mean, I like your project. I like...
Working on it right now, aren't you?
Yes, sir. We've got the grade permits in place, and we're starting...
I mean, everything's gonna move. We realize that things are coming out Scottsville Road.
And, you know, I'm not, by no means implying we have a McDonald's or anything like that that's looking at that property, but, you know, when we really start looking at restricting these hours, you know, we could be restricting more of the larger chain-type people from maybe being interested in the properties out there, but, you know, I...
Just for reference, I'll just mention, I just looked up Culvers and Sonic that are both out that way, and Culvers closes at ten PM, Sonic at midnight, so...
Okay. We can stay in compliance with, you know, I think one o'clock would be great. I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Do the commissioners have other questions for Mr. White?
The other question is alcohol. Is there a prohibiting of an alcohol sales out there, or it can have a liquor store there, or...
I don't have one asking me to be there right now, but, you know, the county, I think, is wet, so... And we... That property is in the county, so I think if there was a restaurant there that wanted to serve alcohol, it should be... I would think it should be considered, anyway. I mean, if they went through the proper channels to get their licensing and everything.
Do you have any questions? I'll open it up and see if we have any questions in the audience? Anything else? Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience? I'll just ask, do we have any opposition to this request? No questions and no opposition?
Have we answered everything you need there?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate the questions.
Any comments or questions, Commissioners, before I call for a motion?
I do have one more question. Sorry.
Yes, no, ma'am, that's fine.
On the signage, is each building gonna have a signage, or is there gonna be, like, a community sign? And this is a small monument area if we're gonna have multiple businesses there. How is the signage gonna be handled?
The signage is on the monument. No, and we hoping to have each business's name on that monument-type sign. And the monument sign will also, you know, kind of conhere to the type and the color of that building also.
You're not gonna have six different signs?
No, sir.
I think that's the question. Yeah.
Zoning ordinance would only allow one freestanding sign for the property, but each sign... Or each building individually, if they had wall signage identifying the tenants within that building, that would also be allowed, but freestanding signage would just be one.
Any other questions? Can I ask for a motion, please?
Take the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number twenty-nineteen-oh-eight DP, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance as the following objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, also find that there have been major changes of an economic, fiscal, or social nature within the area of the property in question, and request that the findings of the fact and recommendation included evidence of testimony presented by the witnesses at public hearing.
Thank you, sir. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am, and the motion carried. Thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner. Next item, twenty-nineteen thirty-four Z County, Mary Fishback, and the City County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezonate a portion of a tract of land containing approximately point-five-six-one acres located at ninety-one thirty-six Porter Park from agriculture to residential estate. I have the staff report. Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you, Chair Runner. Normally, I would say we had a pre-application conference on such and such date, but we do not have a pre-application conference for this particular case, so this is gonna be pretty quick, but I'll answer any questions you all may have. What we're wanting to do here tonight is to match the zoning of the rest of the property. You'll see that the rest of the property is zoned residential estate, and just wanting to take that agriculture and make it residential estate with the rest of this. So, at the time the plat was recorded in twenty-seventeen, the property became split-zoned, and so the property owner has granted the planning commission limited power of attorney to remove the split zoning on this property.
This is just a cleanup?
Yes, that is correct. So, anyway, just for the record, a portion of the property was rezoned in twenty-fourteen. The proposal is compatible with the comprehensive plan, since nothing is proposed to change as part of this application, other than just removing that split zoning. And so, just to go through your staff report, there's really nothing else in here. No development plan conditions, no site characteristics review, nothing of note, just that LU one-one-one, one-one-two, one-one-three, one-one-four, it's exempt from the flume compliance. The proposal is compatible with the surrounding area, again, since nothing is changing. So, I think I've already gone through all the points to consider, pretty much, and I can say with certainty that the applicants are here, because it's us. So, anyway, any questions you all may have?
You know what how that happened?
How it happened?
Yeah.
The property was... A portion was rezoned in twenty-fourteen, and it's the same property owner, correct? You maybe will speak more to it.
It was rezoned in twenty-fourteen when we converted several agricultural parcels to RE, and so now we've had it happen where people have been trying to either swap land or reconfigure parcels, where they're just doing minor changes, and since the property is zoned RE, it makes it limited in what they can do. And so, we kind of came up with this idea, if somebody just wanted to trade the same acreage with a neighbor, or maybe acquire a little bit of extra land from a neighbor, then we could just maybe go through this process to clean up the zoning after the plat was already recorded.
And then, I'll add another small piece. It's also an attempt by the planning commission, by us all here, to alleviate some of the burden of that expense whenever it's just a simple property swap or something, you know, similar to what these applications are tonight. Why make someone rezon when nothing is actually really changing? So, we just took it upon ourselves to periodically have these cleanups, if you will, and shift that to us.
Any other questions? Do we have any opposition to this request? No questions, no opposition? I'll ask for a motion.
Take the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, docket number twenty-nineteen thirty-four Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by the compliance and objectives and action items listed presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at public hearing.
Sir, we need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am, and the motion carried. And the next item, docket number twenty-nineteen thirty-five Z County, Ruth Hughes Estate and City County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezonate a portion of a tract of land containing approximately point-four-three-six acres located at eighty-nine-five Smith Grove, Scottsville Road, from agriculture to residential estate. And again, Ms. Ramsey?
All right.
Can we say ditto?
I'm not gonna belabor anything. Literally, I think the only thing different is that just a plat was recorded in July of twenty-nineteen instead of in twenty-seventeen, so everything else, like I was just saying in the last one, is the same. So, this is another cleanup, so you can just repeat everything that I just said, you know, for the last one, so...
Commissioners' questions? Do we have any opposition? No questions, no opposition? I will ask for a motion.
Take the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, docket number two-thousand-nineteen thirty-five Z CO, based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, as demonstrated in the compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am, and again, the motion carried. Next item, docket number twenty-nineteen thirty-six Z BG, James and Sally Brown have filed an application to rezonate a portion of a tract of land containing approximately one-point-zero-five-three acres located at twenty-nine twenty-nine Small House Road from RS-one-A, which is single-family residential, to RS-one-D, single-family residential with a general development plan.[1789.23] Have the staff report for Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Runner and Commissioners. There was a pre-application on June 14th of 2019 for the property you see here outlined in yellow. Just to point out a few quick surrounding items, you see it's on, as stated on Small House Road, you see the Massey Springs development here, just to the bottom of the page, and then the single-family properties continuing down Small House Road at the top of the page. The existing zoning of the property, as you mentioned, is RS1A, and it has been single-family residential since zoning was established. The existing land use is also, is actually moderate density, I'm sorry, single-family residential is the existing land use, the future land use is moderate-density residential. And then we have the exhibit here for you to look at as we go through the rest of the staff report. I'm gonna move on to page two, to the site characteristics review, and look at the layout, lot sizes and setbacks. The proposed lot configuration is shown, before you on your screen, the setbacks would adhere to the RS1D standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, with the exception of the front yard setback, and they are proposing in the development plan condition number eight to increase that front yard setback to 90 feet, as outlined in that development plan, in order to be further away from Small House Road, to be more in character with other properties on Small House Road. Moving down to natural features, there is an existing line of mature trees located along the southern and western property lines. Applicants committed in development plan condition number seven, that any trees 12 inches in diameter or larger, within five feet of the southern and western property lines, will be preserved. And then just note that this application does comply with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review. Moving on to the site design and compatibility review, just mention a couple things here, looking at the surrounding architectural features. The majority of the residences along the west side of Small House Road and in the Massey Springs development are one-story. There are some two-story residences on the east side of Small House Road in Aspen Place. The applicants are proposing to allow any new residents constructed within the development to be up to two stories in height, which is noted in development plan condition number four. The building materials review, the applicants committed in development plan condition three, that any new residents be developed with at least 80% brick, stone, cement-based siding, or other modern masonary material. Plain-faced block is prohibited as a visible finish material. That's in, again, in development plan condition three, there's a mix of different types of building materials in the adjacent properties. Building orientation, the existing home faces Small House Road, and the applicants have committed in development plan condition number five, that any new residents will also be oriented to face Small House Road. Proposed open space, the maximum allowable lot coverage in the proposed RS1D is 75%, and the applicants have committed to only be at 50% in development plan condition number six. Looking at those development plan conditions, I will, won't repeat any of the ones already went over, which is pretty much just one and two. So number one, access would be limited to no more than one access point on Small House Road. Development would be coordinated with the Bowling Green Public Works Department. And then number two, any new residents shall have at least a one-car garage. The remaining development plan conditions I have already went over. Moving on to the focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 15 items. The proposal complies with the future land use map and the moderate-density residential category, and with LU111 and LU112, but the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area, and if, whether or not it complies with LU113. The proposal may comply with LU2, the planning commission, again, should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. Then moving on to page four, proposal may comply with HN1, HN1.2, and HN1.3. Again, it's up to this body to determine if the proposal is a suitable infill project that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area and along Small House Road, and if it will strengthen existing neighborhoods in the district. And then the last one I'll mention is the proposal may comply with HN2.1 and HN4, and again, you should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location, and if it will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. Finishing up, I'll go back to the points to consider, I'll just touch on the last two bullets. Again, the planning commission should consider if the construction of an additional single-family home will impact the current development, pattern of development, and/or if it will alter the character of the area as proposed. And then the last one is existing lots on the west side of Small House Road are 100 feet wide. Planning commission should determine if the proposed 50-foot lot width and the flag-shaped lot is compatible with the existing lots on Small House Road. So that's all I have for the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicants and their engineers here as well.
And this is gonna be a single-family?
That's correct. Single, single-family.
What kind of driveway? Are they gonna share a driveway? Or in that 50-foot, they're gonna put a driveway beside the other one?
The applicant may be better to answer that, but they will have to coordinate that with the public works department.
They haven't yet done that?
I do not personally know that. They can answer that in a second.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Peterson before we hear from the applicant? Thank you, sir. And we'll hear from the applicant? If you'd state your name and address, please.
My name is James C. Brown. I reside at 2835 Small House Road, it's about seven lots up the street from this property. And, excuse me, I do, yes, ma'am.
That's, go ahead.
Planning commission is, you know, they've done a good job at evaluating this, they've worked with me. I've had several proposals since I bought this property at auction about five years ago. I've been approached about apartments, about PDU units, tearing down the existing residence on this property, and putting in a cul-de-sac and building several residences around there, similar to the ones across the street at Aspen Court. One reason I bought this property is I went to the auction, not planning to buy it, but I was there, and there's only a couple of people bidding on the property. It wasn't going at a high price. The property was in poor condition, hadn't been, had any recent remodeling, or probably any remodeling inside the residence since it was built in 1965. But it had been standing vacant a couple of years, people who resided there had passed on, and so I bought the property, I bid on the property, because the people that were bidding at the time, at the auction, they were gonna convert it to rental property. Well, I live up the street, about seven or eight doors, and I didn't want rental property on Small House Road. I, I know there is some rental property there, I don't really have anything against it, except the whole area is changing. When I moved to 2835 in 1977, I was in the country, and I'm still located in the county where my current residence is. But that whole characters of the, the Small House Road has changed. First, we have the changing of the road for new intersection. We have the PDU of, I think it's Massey Springs, and then we have the one across the street, which originally, I think, was planned to be apartments, you know, but there was a lot of opposition against that, and they changed it, you know, so. But anyway, I, I have every intention of preserving the nature of the, of the area. Another thing, when I bought the property at auction, it was announced that it had two lots. I assumed it had two equal lots. Come to find out, after I burnt it to the property, the current property line between the two lots runs directly through the center of the existing residence. So I've tried to, struggled the last several years, tried to figure out how to get another residence on the property that I bought, with the intention of maybe having that possibility. And I don't, I, I just wanna use the property that I bought. And the only problem I see with it, it doesn't comply with everything else along the west side of Small House Road there, is all the frontage is 100 feet, you've got 100-foot, 90 to 100-foot setbacks, but all the property lots are 400 feet deep, all went all the way up to, almost to, I guess, Shawnee Estates. So the only way I could figure to, to get use of the property, the two lots, is to rezonate to RS1D, that, the proposal. So that's my agenda. I hope that you'll consider my application in a positive way, and help me out on this, and that's all I have to say unless you have some questions.
Thank you, sir.
Are you proposing to do the driveway? Should we share a driveway? Or you gotta put one in the middle, going through that 50-foot, or?
That's up to discussion, I guess. I planned, my plan is it'd be a separate driveway, like all the other residences there, and possibly on the other side of the property, on the north side of the property, I guess, away from the existing driveway that's there. That's the way all the residences are up, up the street there, and I know space is a problem because of the narrowness of the lot, but that's the only, that's the only option I've got, under the current rules for.
Talk to public works?
I'm not about the driveway, no ma'am, but, you know, but I, I intend to work with them, to work that out when the time comes. And I might mention too, that it's not my current plan to build there myself, I just wanna make the lot available for building, and I, and I certainly, like I said, I wanna preserve the character of the area, and any sale of the property for a builder, it would certainly meet with some restrictions from the deed, as well as, you know, planning and zoning.
Other questions? No other questions from the commissioners? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Do we have any opposition to this request? No questions, no opposition? Then I will ask for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 201936CBG, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by the compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion include summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
We need a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance? Commissioner Clark? Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am, the motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That brings us down to the public hearing that we will be having to consider the text amendment on the zoning ordinance for the revised Article 1 through 5.
Yes, ma'am, thank you again. I will be brief, so hopefully you had a chance to read the memo that was supplied in the packets. The nature of this was a request from our local elected officials to review changes to the zoning ordinance, specifically relating to car dealership restrictions, certain restrictions that we had implemented in our, which I believe is 2017, when we made our last, last revisions. But staff was agreeable to looking at that specific change to allow more flexibility for location of car sales. And I just wanna make sure and state that these proposed changes do not include any changes to signs or Airbnbs. Those two discussions will probably be coming soon, but these, these changes are largely housekeeping changes. You know, we had a pretty large rewrite the last time, and you know, you always miss something. Couple of instances, including the, the car sales one, you know, we always said we can't be afraid to make changes, and if we don't get something quite right, we can't be afraid to make further changes. So that's kinda what this is. So this request gave us an opportunity to make, tweak some of those other areas where we missed some items, or maybe needed some clarification, so you were provided with a summary of those changes. I'm just gonna touch on a few of those, and then ask for questions. But starting in Article 3, where we talked about this previously, but we're removing the newspaper advertising requirement for site development plans, we, we have, if this passes, all of the, all of the bodies, including this one, we, we will remove that requirement. We've been posting those on the, on the website already. We've also added provision granting staff the authority to approve minor amendments to university district and urban growth overlay plans. This is where they're pretty much minor no, no-brainer changes, I guess, if you wanna look at it that way, so we can kinda reduce some of the red tape in those cases. Those requests were made by the design review board in the urban growth overlay district, so we can, we're going ahead and making those changes. In Article 4, there's a clarification on, for fences on corner lots. We've got routine variance requests to, to allow fences to be taller in side yards, or in that second front yard, if you will, on the, the non-front-facing, so we're requesting to go ahead and, and make that change. There's a couple of changes relating to setbacks, so in some of the commercial zones, in the incompatible uses, we kinda had some inconsistencies, or zero setbacks, so we're proposing to increase those to at least five feet, and then make the incompatible uses more, kind of the same or uniform. So in commercial zones, going from zero to five-foot setbacks, we think will have very little impact, because building codes kinda dictate that buildings be at least 10 feet apart, or it gets more expensive, a lot more expensive quick, so most people are not building that close together anyway. And then maintenance, there's not enough maintenance room, so. And then, you know, we require accessory structures to be five-foot back, but in those cases, primary structures can be zero, so just kinda trying to make more sense of that. Also in Article 4, a clarification of parking exemptions when located in or near downtown. We drew kinda the half of the inner loop of the bypass, if you will, that, that we reduced our parking regulations, kind of in that Tiff district area. You do have a couple of changes at your, well, one was attached, I think, as a, in your packet, and you can say, say we're vehicle towing, it's just changing from, from vehicle repair to industrial service, and that's just to better classify that for, for protections of adjacent properties. But the other handout you had at your desk is just a, kind of a accidental omission from the first time we changed. We're adding in the RS districts that are in that downtown area, they will be, get that same parking reduction benefit there too. And also the sewer exception, am I getting that right, Rachel, or is that, am I?
Sewer exception would have been what was mailed out originally.
Okay.
It was just an oversight.
Okay.
We were trying to
Thank you.
Clean up the parking downtown, and I missed it on this page.
Okay.
I realized it today, and we printed it and made it in time, so.
And then the, the last one I'll mention, 'cause I think it's kind of important, because I, I want to at least try to give the impression that we're, we listen, and try to be business-friendly as possible, and allow businesses to not only get started, but grow in this community too. So in Article 5, we're adding flexibility for home office uses, to allow limited on-premise merchandise storage in conjunction with a home-based business. So if you have something you sell on Etsy, or eBay, or maybe have Mary Kay or Avon, technically right now, you're not allowed to have any storage of those materials at your property, so this would make a change to allow some of that limited storage area for those, those types of operations. Hopefully that'll get you started, your business will grow well, and then you'll need a business location and, and, and have a new retail stuff. So, oh, one other thing, I said I was done. But one other thing, we made all drive-through requirements match. In Article 5, we had previously left out retail, kinda pickup windows, and so we, we're making those, those requirements match also. And I already mentioned the vehicle, the motor vehicle sales change too. So that's all I have for you, and if you have specific questions, be happy to answer them, but other than that, I would just re-request that we appro- just request that we approve these and give a positive recommendation. I failed to give a motion page to you, suggested motion, but I do have one written here if someone would like to see that and make that motion after you have any discussion or questions.
Questions, Commissioner.
A question about the setbacks. We still have plenty of room for fire trucks to get through, and you're talking about zero, and you're talking about five.
Yeah.
Fire truck won't work there.
Yeah, we're going from zero to five, so it's an improvement. Fire trucks still wouldn't be able to fit around there, but during the permit review process, the fire departments do review those permits, or if we have a development plan, site development plan, fire department does review that for proper fire access, so we have that in place.
I know out there by us, there was a, not the house, but the outbuilding was too close to the house, and it caught fire. Of course, it caught the house on fire, and the fire department said it was way too close, so that was my concern. I don't want an outbuilding to cause a large house to catch fire.
So that's a different requirement, that'd be a building code requirement. This is just how close you can be to the property line, not distances between structures. It kind of goes along with that, but it's, that's a different.
Oh, it kind of went.
You're fine.
Been the only other thing that I would suggest that if it can be done, and obviously probably not tonight, but talking about giving the staff authority, you know, the two cleanup things we did tonight, the staff should have authority to make those changes.
Don't know that we can do that by state law. State law, this body, then as well as the elected body, has to vote on any changes to the text or map amendment, so I think we have to keep with that. We have the ability to make some interpretations, if it's just like a little bit of sliver or something, and we can say that went with the property line as we make adjustments to the map, but we can't technically rezone property without the legislative bodies.
So if we make the motion to approve this, it still has to go to the city, the county, and the four locals?
Got it.
Okay.
Other questions? Questions from anyone in the audience? No questions, no comments? I'll ask for a motion. There you go, Ms. Clark. I think that.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning text amendments. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed text amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan. Further, I request that the motion include a summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rich.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison. Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Thank you. And brings us to new business.
Yes, so we do have an item under new business. We are getting close to needing a building subcommittee and to make a decision on what we want to do for our building situation. We do have some initial numbers on our existing building for renovations, and then we have, staff has also been working at two other locations in the downtown area, which will remain, I guess, a secret for now, but we're working to get numbers on those, too, so we think we'll have up to three options to consider. We're going to get true numbers on those and look at kind of the one-year, that first-year cost for all three options, and then also a five-year and a 10-year actual cost, and then look at those. So what we'd like to do is get a building subcommittee together to look at the numbers, but then also tour those facilities and go over the changes that we're proposing, so we can make that decision.
I would like to ask Mr. Dean Warren, Mr. Christian Volkert, and Mr. Tim Graham if they would serve on that committee, and I, too, would like to be on that committee. That's open. If any of the other commissioners would like to serve on that committee.
I would like to.
Then so we could get together and get you on there, okay?
Expect to probably meet within a week or two, and, you know, we'll try to keep those as brief as possible, but touring the building and going over numbers might take an hour or so, but we'll let you know on that.
And Ms. Vitale.
Okay, good.
Vitale.
We just can't have more than six, because that makes a quorum, and therefore we have a term issue.
Well, yeah, so we would have a quorum, but we could still do it. We could just, we just have to advertise it and advertise where we're going to meet in a time.
Okay.
And that's okay.
If that's more than seven, I mean, I don't mind backing out.
I think that's, I think that's six together, so that's okay.
Yes, we're good.
Six is perfectly fine.
We have six.
Correct.
It's the seventh, yeah.
Yeah.
It puts us at a quorum.
You know, the subcommittee will just meet and get the details. Will still obviously have to come before the full planning commission to get decisions and authorizations and all that good stuff.
Okay, so we have Mr. Warren, Mr. Volkert, Mr. Graham, Ms. Vitale, Ms. Clark, and then Thank you all. Anything else, sir?
Why?
Any commissioners? Anything before? Then meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.